28:00 PM, microphones alive. Microphones alive.
The Chair will call the September 16th, 2025 meeting of the City Council to order. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Redpath, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
The clerk's birthday today, everyone. Would you please call the roll?
Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford. Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Otriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley. Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Redpath. Civility pledge in the interest of civility. I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. At this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence. On Sunday, September 14th, the great state of Illinois lost one of its past governors, Jim Edgar. So I would like for everyone to have a moment of silence for Governor Edgar. Thank you very much. We're going to go into zoning. Are we all set up and ready to go?
Our commotions are zoning.
We're going to do zoning.
Okay.
Okay. So the first item on the agenda is docket number 2025-017 for the property located at 3041 Taylor Avenue. Alderman Williams?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we're going to withdraw this.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second for withdrawal. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Want to ask her?
Alderman Conley, how do you vote? Yes.
Oh, can I get a motion? So first I'll do, since Alderwoman Conley, you're not a vote on this current issue. All the ayes have it, it is withdrawn. Thank you, Alderman Williams. Can I get a motion from the council to let Alderwoman Conley join by phone? We have a motion, can I get a second? And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, Alderwoman Conley, you're official now.
She's on the plane.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2025-029 for the property located at 1921 Lowell Avenue. Alderwoman Otriano?
Yes, Mayor, I move that we continue this until the October 21st meeting.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to continue to October 21st. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, oh.
Alderman Conley, how do you vote?
Okay, those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is item number 2025-030 for the property located at 223 North MacArthur Boulevard, Parcel 1, 1,000 and 1,004 West Jefferson Street, Parcel 2. The petitioners are Absolute Perfection 2 Incorporated and JB Comm Properties LLC. Present zoning classification is S2 Community Shopping and Office District, Section 155.031. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to B2 General Business Service District, Section 155.034. Variance of Sections 155.112, surfacing 155.069B3 and 4 fences, 155.480J and I pertaining to transitional buffer yards, 155.063 required yards for lots adjoining residential districts, 155.050 screening and sign variances of Sections 155.320ACD and E, 155.322C, 155.321A, and 155.480G and H. For additional detail on the requested variances, please refer to the Agenda Packet and Zoning Recap for docket item number 2025-030. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial of the requested reclassification to B2, but approval of a use variance in S2 to allow the property to be used as a construction company office, showrooms and storage of building materials, tools and equipment, provided that, one, no manufacturing or fabrication occurs on the site, and, two, exterior storage is limited to the business vehicles and equipment in a solid fenced area without barbed wire as depicted on the plans submitted with the petition and approval of a variance to Section 155.112. The landscape variances in 155.050, 155.063, and the requested sign variances, but denial of the requested variance to Section 155.069B3 and 4 pertaining to barbed wire fences. For additional detail and conditions recommended by the Regional Planning Commission, please refer to Agenda Packet and Zoning Recap, docket number 2025-030. The Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is concur with the staff recommendation. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
That was a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mayor, I would like to ask before my motion, could Attorney Segato come up to the podium? As it's my understanding, his client would like to withdraw a portion of the motion or the requested relief.
Absolutely, Alderwoman.
Correct. We've agreed to withdraw the request for 155.480G, beginning with landscaping as the street frontage. We've also entered an agreement with the objector that we will put the property, put the sign south of his south property line.
Thank you.
And he's agreed to withdraw the objection.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Segato, the sign will be south of, I'm writing as fast as I can here.
Uh, the south of the south property line of 1020 West Jefferson Street.
With your suggestion for amendment, I guess it would be, does the 155.480G landscaping, street frontage withdrawal, does that also pertain to the barbed wire fencing or no?
He is also not going to do the barbed wire fencing as well.
Is that a part of that or should that be added?
We can add that in if you'd like.
Okay, so also no barbed wire.
That's correct.
Please.
Well, um, yeah, I'm gonna do it.
So do you want to make a motion, Alderwoman?
Yes, do I do that before Carlson?
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Carlson didn't realize you had chimed in.
Thank you, Mayor. Is, I'm looking on the picture to the right. Is that an entrance off Jefferson Street? Am I looking at that right or is that a possible entrance?
Uh, well, it's an existing entrance right, entrance right now.
So you can enter and exit off Jefferson? Because it was my understanding, I thought it was not going to be there.
No, it is, it's existing.
Oh, it's me.
I mean, I have to clear with IDOT, but.
I would say, I think to use it, you'd have to go to.
But the intent is to be able to use it so we can go in.
Yeah, that's how it works.
Here, there'd be an entrance and exit right there on the side.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Okay, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I had to write that down. I move that we approve the staff recommendation, but modify the staff recommendation regarding the square footage of the ground signage segments will allow for 374 square feet of total new ground foot, uh, front signage with the requirement that the sign facing Jefferson Street will be placed so as to not obstruct the property of 1020 and 1024 West Jefferson Street, specifically that any such sign shall be located south of the south property line of 1020 West Jefferson. Did I meet everything?
Landscaping and the barbed wire, though.
It's been withdrawn.
Okay, so we're good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so you're making a motion?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman.
No problem.
So we have a motion and a se, and we're not going to make you repeat that, Alderman. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will vote yes, all those opposed will vote no. The voting open?
Alderman Conley, how do you vote?
So the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. Thank you for your time this evening. Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2025-031 for the property located at 3245 Old MacArthur Boulevard, Parcel 1, and 3313 Old MacArthur Boulevard, Parcel 2. The petitioners are Barry S. Kelly and Marcia L. Kelly. Present zoning classification is Sangamon County R1 with a use variance, annexation petition filed that is contingent upon obtaining the requested zoning relief. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to I1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.016 upon annexation. A variance of Sections 155.063A and B required yards for lots adjoining residential districts, 155.050 screening, 155.111 access to off-street parking facilities, 155.112 surfacing, 155.113 screening, 155.131 wholesale manufacturing and industrial plants, 155.480DHI and K, landscaping and lighting requirements, 155.001 definitions, lot and use, 155.214 and 155.040 permitted uses in the I1 Light Industrial District. In the alternative, if reclassification to I1 is not granted, a use variance to allow a contractor shop with outdoor storage of materials related to and accessory to the snow removal business along with the above requested variance. For additional detail on the requested variances, please refer to the Agenda Item Packet and Zoning Recap for docket number 2025-031. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial of the requested I1 zoning, but approval of the S1 with a use variance to allow the requested snow removal and contractor's yard, provided that, one, outside storage is limited to seasonal salt and snow melting materials as described in the petition, and, two, existing fuel tanks shall have bollards installed around the two tanks on all sides to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator. Approval of the variance to Sections 155.001, 155.063A and B, 155.050, 155.113, 155.131, 155.111, and 155.112, 155.480DHI and K, but denial of the variance to Sections 155.214 and 155.040. In the alternative, approval of a conditional permitted use in the S1 for one first-floor single-family residence to accommodate the existing residence and a variance to allow the two existing storage tanks in accord with the recommended use variance. For additional detail and conditions recommended by regional planning, please refer to the Agenda Packet and Zoning Recap for docket number 2025-031. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the staff recommendation of denial of the I1 zoning and to deny all other variances. Uh, the Chair will entertain a motion. Alderwoman?
Um, Mayor, I move that we adopt the Regional Planning Commission Recommendation, including approval of S1 classification with conditional permitted uses and a use variance to allow the requested snow removal business and contractor's yard and the other recommended variances, except extending the time to comply with the surfacing and bollard requirements to five years and requiring screening along the northern edge of Parcel 1, consistent with the other screening variances granted.
So we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the council before we bring up the citizen who's signed up to speak on this? Seeing none?
I mean, I can just give my rationale. So this business has been in operation for like 45 years, and after talking with the proprietors, their intention is to build a building, and it has to have sprinklers, therefore it has to have city water, and they're going to clean up the place by putting a lot of their materials in said building, and they're not going to expand their business at all, and it's a seasonal business, so we expect to not have a lot of disruption, and it's been operating, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Clerk?
Bill Gutchenauer? Good evening.
Oh, can you give us one second? She's getting you set up, sir, sorry. Okay, now you're good.
Thank you. I'm here to speak of some of the concerns I and others have of the petitioner's application for reclassification of property upon annexation. Petitioners want intense industrial zoning, which will then determine their decision and annex into the city. They want to amend or not abide by many rules required of the I1 and S1 zoning classification. Traffic Engineer Report states public work is opposed to surface variances, which would increase dust or particle runoff from the site. It also states that consideration to the adjacent residential area should also be given. Staff then recommended S1 zoning with variances. S1 zoning doesn't fit into this residential neighborhood either. S1 use regulation states, "This district is designed to provide retail and service establishments that have minimal impact on adjacent residential uses and provide a buffer between residential areas and other uses more intensive. These regulations are designed to promote convenient shopping and stability of retail areas and encouraging contiguous retail development. This is not suitable in a neighborhood of residential zone houses. S1 zoning is recommended for professional and administrative office use, which would be appropriately located in a medium and high-density residential area, meaning in an apartment complex or an area situation. While we are grateful of the denial of the industrial one zoning, I ask that the zoning staff reconsider the S1 zoning. My description of the petitioner's method of operation was brought up after the zoning board recommendation, and my description of their operations revealed late night through early morning staging and loading of trucks and trailers. Many of these vehicles and loaders are equipped with high visibility, strobe lighting and loud backup alarms. They also have, in addition to their ten trucks assisting in their operation, many other trucks, many of them with diesel engines that may or may not be certified clean idle diesels, which contribute to the poor air quality that drift over to the neighbors. They sometimes idle for long periods of time. We ask that the zoning staff rescind the S1 recommendation. In addition, the variances they are asking for allow for so much use that is not favorable in a residential neighborhood. Petitioners' intent might increase their property values, but at the risk of lowering values in neighbor, neighboring residential parcels. Many neighbors have made substantial investments into their own houses, some are retired or near retirement. I have concerns about the future sale of petitioner's property. I would like for the City Council to look at this as a residential neighborhood of the whole and not the once of one. It is, in my opinion, that granting more intense zoning than R1 is paving the way to a less desirable area for first-time homebuyers and retirees. I respectfully ask the alderpersons to vote not in favor of all the requests." Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Alderpersons and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion from the council? I don't think we're on here, okay. We're back up. Seeing none, we had a motion and a second. So all those in favor of the motion will vote yes, all those opposed will vote no. Let's see if she's there. She's gone. And the motion passes with eight voting yes, none voting no. And let the record show, the Alderwoman Conley was having a hard time with her connection while on a plane, so she may not be joining us again, so she may not be here. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2025-032 for the property located south of Bun Avenue, parcel number 222-22.0-200-024 and 22-22.0-200-023, sometimes known as 600 Bun Avenue. The petitioners are Kenny Contractors Incorporated. Present zoning classification is I1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.40, .040. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to I2 Heavy Industrial District, Section 155.041, and variance of Sections 155.112, surfacing 155.136, regulations of surfacing for off-street loading facilities, and 155.062C1, permitted obstructions and required yards, front yard 155.114B, regulations for the location of off-street parking facilities, 155.104, required accessory off-street parking spaces, wholesale manufacturing and industrial plants 155.048, further special provisions near district boundaries 155.050, screening 155.063A, required yards for lots adjoining residential districts 155.480I, J, and G, landscaping, screening and lighting regulations. If reclassification is not afforded, petitioner seeks an alternative, a use variance applicable to the subject property to permit in the existing I1 classification. The use is described in paragraph six in the petition. For additional detail on the requested variances, please refer to the Agenda Packet and Zoning Recap for docket number 2025-032. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial of the rezoning to I2 is submitted, but approval of a use variance to allow the use as described in paragraph six of the petition, provided that no retail business is conducted on the site. The site will not have except salvage materials from anyone other than the petitioner or the petitioner's subcontractors, and the location of the scale is placed so it does not interfere with traffic flow to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator and approval of the variances is submitted. The Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is concur with the staff recommendation for approval of a use variance and the variances with the condition that the traffic flow pattern be sound, found satisfactory to the traffic engineer. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the City of Springfield Zoning and Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will vote yes, all those opposed will vote no. And the motion passes with seven voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2025-034 for the property located at 3501 Mayflower Boulevard. The petitioner is Real USA Corporate. Present zoning classification is I1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to I2 Heavy Industrial District, Section 155.041. If reclassification is not afforded, the petitioner seeks an alternative, a use variance applicable to the subject property to permit the existing I1 classification, the use is described in paragraph seven of the petition. The Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff amended recommendation is approval to reclassification of I2. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is concur with the amended staff recommendation. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a recommendation, we accept the, uh, make a motion, we accept the amended Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission, or I guess our, actually, I'm sorry, the planning and zoning, Springfield's planning and zoning recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion from the Alders?
And Mayor, real quick, this is.
Alderman Hanauer.
This is a really, this is a new company coming in and, and, and I'm excited about, about them. It's going to be, uh, what, a crane business or something like that?
Crane manufacturing.
Crane manufacturing, so it's gonna, it's gonna bring some jobs and, and, uh, and so it, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no.
I'm a yes.
Okay, and there we go. So the motion passes, thank you, Alderman Williams, with seven voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2025-035 for the property located at 4900 International Parkway. Petitioner is Nutrien Ag Solutions Incorporated. Present zoning classification is I1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040, and a variance granted by docket 2019-038 for the use of 12 inches of asphalt millings. The requested zoning relief is a variance of Section 155.068, garages or accessory buildings or structures to allow the seat bins with structural pad to be three feet from the existing building instead of six feet, and 155.112 surfacing to allow construction of a driveline area on the east of the building of 12-inch-thick asphalt millings instead of the solid dust-free surface for filling the bins with seed. The Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is concur with the staff recommendation, including the traffic engineer. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion, we, uh, we concur with staff, uh, recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to concur with staff recommendation, any council members? Okay, voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with seven voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2025-036 for the property located at 30312 and 324 Brunns Lane. Petitioner is Joseph Lombardo, executor of the state of Agnes Schleffinger. Present zoning classification is R1 Single Family District, Section 155.015. Requested zoning relief is reclassification to an S2 Community Shopping and Office District, Section 155.031, and the alternative, a reclassification to S1 Neighborhood Commercial and Office District, Section 155.030. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial of the requested S2 reclassification, but approve the S1 reclassification. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is approval of reclassification to S1 with a conditional permitted use to allow residences on the first floor. Council will vote on the reclassification only, the conditional permitted use is a final action that was already taken by planning and zoning per Section 155.178. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation and to exclude the following uses, tobacco slash vape stores and tattoo parlors.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion from the council? Seeing none, voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with seven voting yes, none voting no.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is docket number 2025-038 for the property located at 3108 Great Northern Drive. Petitioners are Parkway Storage Limited. Present zoning classification is I2 Heavy Industrial District, Section 155.041. The requested zoning relief is use variance of Sections 155.214, applications for amendments and variances in 155.041B, permitted uses in the I2 Heavy Industrial District to allow permitted B1 Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033, uses of hair salon barber shop, professional offices located in the front portion of the westernmost building of approximately 2,268 square feet, and a personal trainer gymnasium to operate in the current warehouse located in the rear portion of the westernmost building of approximately 4,524 square feet, and variance of Sections 155.097, required accessory off-street parking regulations, office buildings, 155.098 retail or service establishments, and 155.101B gymnasiums to allow the use as described with 23 parking spaces. Springfield Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff amended recommendation is approval. The Planning and Zoning Recommendation is concur with the amended staff recommendation. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor, I make a motion, we, uh, we accept the Springfield Planning and Zoning Recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission, any discussion from the Alders? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes, all those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with seven voting yes, none voting no. This does conclude the zoning portion of our meeting. At this time, the Chair is going to recognize Police Chief Joe Beal. Chief Beal has a presentation that he is. Uh, Chief Beal has a presentation that he is going to give. Um, I do want to make an announcement for those who are listening at home. During Chief Beal's presentation, we are gonna have some audio played in the council chambers, and because we are broadcasting live, there will be a pause during part of this audio due to, uh, language that will be shared, and so then we will resume broadcasting once that has been shared. Thank you, Chief Beal.
Thank you, thank you for your opportunity. Springfield Police Department is committed to serving every member of our community and building lasting trust with those who have been marginalized by law enforcement. We haven't always got it right, but we remain steadfast in our efforts to improve. We will reduce harm both to our citizens and our officers by leading with transparency and truth. We recognize that silence leads to speculation. At times, we've remained silent out of concern that speaking up may strain community relations and stall progress. But silence has a cost. In some cases, our officers have been at fault, in others, they have faced false accusations and mischaracterizations in the absence of truth. We will not stand in the face of harm, and we will protect our community, our citizens, and our officers. Our community deserves the truth, and we will have it. Springfield Police Department has met with community groups, stakeholders, and members for countless years. I've been a part of these meetings for a better part of five years, forging long-lasting partnerships, relationships, and even personal friendships with the community we serve. These meetings have not always been easy for the parties involved. Through the years of honest and open dialogue, vulnerability and trust, unbreakable bonds have been built. The Faith Coalition is one of these groups that I've met with. We value their opinions, and we have made improvements and changes to the standard operating procedures because of some of the conversations we have had. A sense of trust, respect, and decorum have always been the three core values of these meetings. Although fragile at first, these bonds have continued to strengthen throughout the years. Last Tuesday, I was venomously admonished because I refused to meet with the community member, Tiara Standage. Tiara has continued to, has and continues to disrespect and promote anti-police messaging about the Springfield Police Department, myself taking none of the aforementioned values into consideration, some of these same values that were outlined by the Faith Coalition in their press release last week. Last September, a group of protesters began assembling on the front sidewalk in Municipal Center East. The Springfield Police Department took no action. This changed when the group, including Tiara with a megaphone, entered the Municipal Center East, disrupting operations on the entire first floor, including civilian operations. This action was unauthorized, illegal, and not peaceful. The civilian receptionist fled her desk area in fear. Employees from the Austin Planning and Economic Development fled to higher floors of the building out of fear. Nearly all SPD resources were rerouted to the police station, making response to calls for service in other areas of the city slow, if not impossible. While in the vesplule, the group, and Tiara with a megaphone, chanted, "F the police", and then transitioned to, "Oink, oink, piggy, piggy, we're gonna make your life S-H-I", and you can fill in the blanks. Tiara and others were escorted out of the building only to re-enter sometime later and tear down the paper blocking the windows of the glass doors of the front of Municipal Center East. This paper was put there under my direct order as a de-escalation tactic. Covering the windows with paper worked initially until Tiara and one other subject tore it down. This led to numerous people re-entering the building's vesplule. We began to remove the subjects from the building. Shields were deployed in an effort to provide security to our officers securing the door, as at this point, the protests had become volatile and combative, with participants refusing to back away from the doors, sorry, with, uh, participants refusing to back away from the doors. This was followed by Tiara hoisting a plastic water bottle with the cap off above her head while thrusting it backwards and waving it, pouring water on our police officers. As officers held security for personnel attempting to secure the door again, a protester struck an officer in the head with a wooden stick with a sign mounted on the end. This suspect was not located at this time. The Springfield Police Department showed significant restraint during this event with a group of peaceful protesters who became unlawful. Several participants could have been arrested, but again, we did not in an attempt to de-escalate. At some point, we have to take action. When an aggravated battery, a felony, is committed on one of my officers, we cannot sit back any longer. After committing the battery, Tiara was grabbed by officers who attempted to pull her into a safe area behind the line of police. In doing this, officers were able to get a hold of her hooded sweatshirt. We attempted to pull her behind the line of officers, which is an approved, appropriate and trained technique, but she fell to the ground as she was pushed by the crowd. At that time, officers let go of her, and a short time later, Tiara was arrested without further incident. After some discussion, and again, in an attempt to de-.